Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, February 24th, 2025 Pittsburgh Board of Public Education Public Hearing. Before we get started, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of how tonight's public hearing will work. We will be graced by the vocals of Ms. Mercedes Williams tonight as our moderator. She will call each speaker in order. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. You are not allowed to share your time with another speaker. As you approach the final 30 seconds of your time, the light will begin to blink on the microphone, signifying the time is running out. At the end of your time, the microphone will be shut off, and your time will end, and we will call the next speaker. Those who were not able to attend in person tonight were able to submit their written testimony that will be added to the public record along with the video of tonight's public hearing early tomorrow for everyone to view. Our stakeholders can view the public hearing on the district website by clicking the link at the top of the page. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Williams and our first reader.
Thank you so much, President Walker. At this time, our first speaker is Shirley Anne Hill.
I have followed the public hearings regarding the unfair treatment of former Montessori teacher Ms. Stephanie Lapine by Principal Callie Meyer. Throughout my 41-year career with PPS, I too was subjected to toxic principals like her. In December 2023, Ms. Stephanie Lapine was removed from her classroom by Callie Meyer. After many attempts, and I emphasize many attempts, by the parents/guardians, Callie Meyer did not offer an explanation for Ms. Stephanie Lapine's removal. Ms. Stephanie Lapine was cleared in February of 2024 but was conveniently transferred to another school that does not even have a Montessori program. Why was Ms. Stephanie Lapine not reinstated at Montessori where she belongs? Why is Callie Meyer not being held accountable for her unfair treatment of Ms. Stephanie Lapine, the only lead black teacher? Some Montessori teachers have filed grievances, and still nothing has been done. Toxic principals like Callie Meyer put fear in teachers who speak up by sabotaging their teacher evaluations, and that's a shame. Pretending there are no problems at Montessori definitely creates an unsettling work environment. Teachers should not have to adapt to this leadership style in order to keep their jobs. Some principals are good for conveniently cutting positions when you speak up. I question how students are first when toxic principles are not held accountable. Carrick High School has a very small percentage of black teachers. And with this being Black History Month, this really hits home. Black teachers are crucial for students in 2025 because they provide a vital role model, foster a stronger sense of belonging, and can significantly improve academic outcomes for black students. This came from Artificial Intelligence Overview: Black Students at Carrick Matter. Computer application should be a mandatory business elective class for all incoming freshmen. During my time at Carrick, some English teachers, CTE ITL and CTE director have indicated the importance of this class. Freshmen are not getting the necessary skills in middle school, and I know that for a fact. I did 20 years of middle school. When it is time to do a project, some of them are lost. While at Carrick, I have helped students many times navigate through the necessary software to complete their projects. Quite often, teachers require students to do projects that utilize Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, and Excel. These skills are beneficial to students beyond high school. I'm done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ik Hoi Lo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ik Hoi Lo, and I'm a sophomore at Obama Academy where I play on the soccer team. About four months ago, my team and I learned that we would no longer be allowed to play within the Western Pennsylvania Interscolastic Athletic League, better known as WHIPU, due to a recent ruling from the headboard at PIA. Naturally, we were immediately concerned with our future as a team. In order to play this sport competitively, a team must not only practice, but also they need to play against a variety of strong opponents. Previously in WHIPU, we got games every Tuesday and Thursday over a span of seven weeks. This gave us 14 different games and seven different opponents that we would 100% play. However, with the way that City League is currently set up for soccer, Obama would only have two other competitors. We would only play Alder Dice, and we would only play Brasheer. This would mean we only had four guaranteed games for a season, and that's not at all a diverse enough set of opponents to learn how to play together as a team cohesively and competitively. The new system that PIA suggests actually does give us a few benefits. It gives us an easier way into states. But if just making into states isn't good enough, because if we are only playing four teams, we're not going to be strong enough as a team to compete at that level that states needs us to play at. As a team, I don't think that we necessarily need to play within WHIPU. However, I do think it's necessary that we are playing the same number of games, same number of opponents, and more importantly, we have the same level of competitive play that WHIPU provides us right now. But to play at this level, we're going to need help organizing games, organizing times, making agreements with other teams and other schools that they will play us. So if the board could help us with that and help us make agreements with other teams, make agreements with other school districts that assure, ensure that teams within City League would have a multitude of games against a variety of opponents, it would greatly increase the level of play that we can compete at and allow us to be a competitive team when it comes to us making states. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chiwi Ong.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chiwi Ong, and that was my son earlier. So as you can see, he spoke his view, and I'm going to have my view. It's going to be quite different. All right, so to me, I feel like us not being able to play in WHIPU is taking a step backwards for doing what's best for the kids. Because with WHIPU, we get a schedule. We get the game from WHIPU, and we play an even number of home games and away games. The kids get to play against a larger variety of different opponents with varying competitive levels. But without WHIPU, like you said, with three teams or four teams, you're only going to get six games. And that's not enough to fill up the schedule. And what's going to happen is that now it's going to land on the coaches to find additional teams to play against. And this is on top of their already heavy burden of coaching and their full-time jobs. And the other problem is, within the 20-mile radius, all the other schools are all playing with WHIPU. So who are we going to play? We would then have to travel beyond the 20 to 30 miles, and we only can play on Saturdays because all these other schools are playing in WHIPU on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the other thing is, because we are their non-conference game, we have to travel to them. We do not get home games if we play these other teams. So as you can see, there's absolutely no benefits to us, to the school and to the administration if we are not able to play in WHIPU. Without WHIPU, the athletes lose that opportunity for skill development, growth, and challenges from playing against a variety of teams. Therefore, we need to find a way back to WHIPU. And we know that you do not have the financing. We understand that. But I think you have the responsibility to figure out what needs to be done so that we can go back to playing in WHIPU again for the kids. It's clear that WHIPU is better for athletes, and we need to do what is better for them like we've promised. And we want to work with you. We want to figure out what needs to be done so that we can play WHIPU. But the frustrating thing is, so far, the athletics director has refused to meet up with us to discuss what is the plan for 2026 and beyond. And if we need to go back to WHIPU or PIA to make the changes, this thing takes time, and we need to start now. Therefore, I request that the board and the superintendent formally appoint someone that we can work with, someone who's going to be responsible and accountable to work with us to figure out how we can get back to playing with WHIPU, someone who will not just wait until the last minute to share the information or not give us any information at all, as it has been for this whole WHIPU saga that has been happening. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Sloan.
A few in this room hold a great deal of power for Pittsburgh. However, all of us here care deeply for Pittsburgh Public Schools and our community's future generations. So this has been so loved by my child that I've come to think of this baby doll as my first grandchild, a hope for the future. And what I have discovered about PPS through much pain and sorrow over the past year, not ever missing any of these public hearings, is how very many PPS stakeholders are so very, very powerless. For example, at a school I know well, if parents bring concerns to their child's teacher, the teacher's options are constrained by a high-control principal. And if parents then go to the under-skilled toxic principal, they are met with defensiveness and dismissiveness with lying and bullying if helpful. And if parents reach out for meeting with an assistant superintendent, there can be reassurances that circumstances are being addressed without promises of follow-through or without follow-through on promises offered at such meetings. And if parents send written communications of their distress to any school official, board member, other leaders, as you know, many, many, many communications, the responses are often rote, vacus, or nothing at all, fakus. There is often no response. And if parents, and even if a parent comes here, month after month, laying bare their personal distress with so much vulnerability in such a publicly visible recorded hearing, circumstances remain as if there is no one, as if no one had spoken at all. Now, if ignored long enough, a bitty baby in distress will learn to stop crying, not because the baby's needs or concerns have been addressed, but in being left alone in painful circumstances, the lesson for the baby is that their voice does not matter. Crying out changes nothing. A vulnerable, powerless being is being silenced. A high-control, toxic principal learns her behavior is acceptable. The principal has further leeway to abuse her power, and some families are gone. Some families withdraw from active involvement, only waiting for their time to wrap up, and still, still, newer parents experience the pain of an under-skilled, high-control principal in reoccurring stressful circumstances of school life. A principal whose toolkit is so underdeveloped that teachers remain terrorized and parents remain scapegoated. There is no substantial improvement of circumstances, just the silencing of voices, just the scapegoating of those with far less power. So going forward, how might your skills grow in the use of the power that you have, away from scapegoating parents and away from silencing?
Our next speaker is Jessica Kwasniewski.
My name is Jessica Kwasniewski, and I'm the parent of a child who attends Conroy Education Center. I've spoken multiple times since November about the potential move of Conroy to Southbrook. My son is 13 years old, and I've been advocating for him since his diagnosis at 22 months. I've spent countless hours educating myself and learning about the world we are now a part of. I often find myself making excuses for those around me who don't understand. As a special-need parent, I have gotten used to begging for the bare minimum, pushing for others to see his worth, and continuously fighting for things other people take for granted. It's exhausting, and over the last few months, the place I've had to fight the hardest is within his own school district. Southbrook is not set up for the Conroy population. Parents, staff, and students themselves have given you all more reasons than needed to why this is not a decision that puts our students first. I've spent hours sending emails, making phone calls, requesting meetings. Zero communication has been given back to me from the district. I've asked for over two months for a meeting with Ms. Camper that I am still waiting for. I've asked for answers to questions that have no response, and my assumption is that's because there are no real answers to be given. How is this considered acceptable? This is below the bare minimum that I've been pushed to accept. We are told as parents in this district to speak up, to show up, that our concerns are important, that our voices matter, that our kids matter. How am I supposed to believe any of that when this is the response that I get when I'm trying to advocate for my son? When is the district going to show up? I'm done making excuses and trying to rationalize that maybe you all don't understand what's involved in educating these students and keeping them safe. It is the district's responsibility to understand. You are again forcing me to accept less than the bare minimum. We are told as a whole that we can't be resistant to change, that we need to have open minds and have faith in those navigating these decisions. I am not resistant to change. I am resistant to no accommodations. I am resistant to a lack of safety. I am resistant to missed opportunities for a group of students that need those opportunities the most. I am resistant to being last on the list of your priorities. I have already begun exploring options for my son if this move happens and his needs are not being met, as many other families in my position will also do. And to be honest, I don't even know if that would matter to the district except for the amount of money it would cost, because that is the bottom line, correct? Not my child, the money. But see, your cost versus my cost is very different, because the decision to move that building could cost my son his right to a safe and adequate education within Pittsburgh Public, and that will never be something I'm willing to accept for him. I truly hope that the testimonies of everyone here this evening and the months in the past have really been heard, and our students get the outcome that they deserve. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donald Pastoria. A second call for Donald Pastoria. Our next speaker is Kathy Hartman.
My name is Kathy Hartman. I'm the parent of Joe Hartman, who is a senior at Conroy. I had the opportunity to speak to you all in November in support of keeping Conroy at its current location. Tonight, I'd like to make it personal, hopefully without crying. My son Joey has come so much further than I ever dreamed possible for him. He's 20 years old. Enrolling him in Conroy about 10 years ago was one of the best decisions I've ever made. This facility has accommodations for all of our special students and all of their individual needs. It employs the most compassionate inspirational teachers and aides and staff. Can I ask if anybody here has ever spent the day with our students at Conroy or even a couple hours? And you probably know what I'm feeling in my heart right now. It's a warm, welcoming environment, and there's nothing but a look of pure happiness on every one of those students' faces. This is their home away from home. They have a community-based vocational training program, which my son has participated in for the last three and a half years. This is an on-the-job work skill instruction program. He started working at a thrift store in Lawrenceville. This year, he does janitorial work at a church in Bethel Park. And he's only been able to succeed in this work program because of the hands-on experience he received prior to the last three years at Conroy. They have a fully equipped kitchen, laundry area, recycling program, housekeeping, and janitorial program. This was everything Joey needed to learn how to someday be a productive member of society. He now uses those skills in his everyday life at home. He helps me bake, do the dishes, do the laundry, make the grocery list, as well as get the items when we get to the store. And he learned all of those skills at Conroy. Once he graduates next year, I have all the confidence that he will be able to reach his full potential in his life, thanks to everything he has learned at Conroy. My wish is that our future Conroy students will be able to experience all the same opportunities that Joey did. In fact, I hope they get even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Older.
The district's strategic plan states our vision is that all students will graduate high school, college, career, and life-ready, prepared to complete a college degree, or be workforce-ready. But how can we achieve this when there is a plan to move Conroy to Southbrook, a location with unknown zoning to accommodate the existing industrial kitchen for vocational training, with insufficient space for required sensory and bathroom accommodations, and inadequate space to move the existing mock apartment where students practice life-ready skills? These are the very tools that our kids need to reach the district's vision. And rather than identifying them as a source of district pride, a priority for preservation, and a student necessity within the facilities plan, they were omitted. Instead, the plan focused on the one example of what Conroy allegedly lacked, stating Conroy, quote, "does not have great outdoor spaces, example playground field, et cetera. But there is great outdoor space with a community field and public playground directly across from the building, arguably greater space than fenced-in asphalt with no play equipment, which you will still offer at numerous schools post-merge." Through time and experience, Conroy has been designed and custom-built around these students' dignity and respect, access to sports, life skills development, sensory accommodations, educational tools, and community engagement. Understand and respect the value of that history before dismissing teachers, parents, and students for not wanting to start over in a new location with less. The facility plan claims that this move will allow for the sharing of an unspecified resource with Pioneer, consolidate the special-need students to one campus, and save money on building upgrades. But the plan omitted the costly remodels necessary to take Southbrook to the fed and state classroom mandates for this level of special ed and accommodation. It also overlooked the impact on Pioneer. Pioneer's public website proudly states, quote, "During the school year, students audit classes at Pittsburgh-Southbrook, enjoying the interaction with their typical peers." The facility plan did not document that moving Conroy into Southbrook will cut inclusion opportunities for disabled Pioneer students. That's part of what they're having you vote on. And the plan did not explicitly mention that due to zoning and building limitations, this move will cut the vocation program, eliminate community-based learning within a walkable business district, reduce needed access to sensory space, and eliminate the bathroom dignity for disabled Conroy students. But that's the reality of what you're voting on. There are few resources left to combine with Pioneer when Conroy is being forced to leave so much behind. And there's no mystery it wasn't mentioned in the plan. See, the board can't seek answers for questions that you didn't know to ask. But we know what is at stake for our kids' ability to access their education. And to be clear on public record, and before you vote, we have ensured that you now know too, because my son is relying on you to make the hard decision about what his school is going to be able to offer him and his peers for their future. And he needs you to protect these integral resources in order for him to succeed. So I hope you will rejoin Conroy in celebrating what our students are achieving and not fighting us for what they stand to lose, because you will turn allies to adversaries and parents into unstoppable advocates if you don't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jasmine Manigal. Our next speaker is Skylar Wingate-Massie.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Skylar Wingate-Massie, and I am the founder of a program called Plant a Seed Children's Partnership. Plant a Seed began working in the Pittsburgh and surrounding areas over 20 years ago in various organizations and schools such as the Second Chance, Hosanna House, Circles International. We also work in the Mennessean School District. And three years ago, we were really excited to receive ESRS funding to provide supportive emotional learning services to the wonderful students at King Elementary. And we are really excited to now be in our third year as OST partners. As an OST partner, we were invited to apply for the COVID compensatory services funding to continue our services. We were initially approved in February, and after two sessions, we received notice that our proposal was rejected. I'm here today just to provide some feedback and testimonials to which I have attached, I sent via email that you all are all able to read, that we've received from teachers and parents regarding the impact that we have had with the students at King, not only at King, but all over Allegheny County and also in Westmoreland County. And I would just like to ask the board to reconsider our proposal. I'm not sure why it was rejected, and I'm sure there are areas that you have to consider. But I'm going to read one of the teachers' reviews. Mrs. Green is a teacher at King. And she said, "I believe PAS has provided my students with an additional avenue to build on their communication, social skills with interacting with one another. I believe the program has helped to highlight their certain behaviors and has allowed some students to recognize their own hurtful behaviors, as well as how being on the receiving end can be hurtful, and it also has made them aware of their hurtful actions towards other people. Through the course of Plant a Seed visits, I've noticed a level in my more challenging students, maybe not in the heat of the moment, but during those restorative conversations of them being able to take accountability in some way and acknowledge why someone else may have been affected by their actions." She says, "I've also noticed more initiative from students as far as being able to recognize and apologize in scenarios instead of the teacher having to intervene." The fifth-grade student, this teacher this year, commented after a Sankofa event that we had through Apost that her students were acting more like a family, and even the other teachers noticed it. So I just want to encourage the board to feel free to research about Plant a Seed. We're making an impact in the lives of our students, and I know that you share that feeling that that's the most important thing we need to do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Zangle.
My name is Sarah Zangle. I'm back again. I think you guys saw me coming because I just rewrote everything. I was going to speak about transparency and the feasibility study coming out tomorrow night, and that we hadn't heard anything. So I thank you for the robocall today. I thank you also for the talking points and for using all of your different methods of communication to communicate that. I also want to point out, though, that I got three robocalls the month before the parent university, letting me know that the parent university was coming up. I got a robocall about the federal election and the results of that and that you're caring for our students. We got robocalls about a lot of stuff. The feasibility study that's coming out tomorrow night is about the future of PPS. Like, it's our path forward. You're telling us what's happening next. These are next steps for all of our students in the district, for everybody involved. And I'm not sure why at 4/21 I got notified about it today. So I think we need to do better. I think we need to be more transparent. But thank you for at least doing that today. I appreciate it. I'm glad that everybody is on the same page and that we are all aware of it tomorrow, and I'm excited for that happening. I'm excited to hear what's happening tomorrow night and to hear the superintendent address that. In terms of student outcomes-focused governance, I completely understand the need for it and understand the need for guidance and structure and for the board to have a platform with which to follow and a structure for which to follow. I understand that transitions are hard between board members and accountability of the administration when board is transitioning, and the board is always changing every two years. I understand that that's hard. The education of board members is hard. You're getting on, and you're kind of moving with something that's already going. You're jumping onto a moving train. I understand that in order to keep moving this forward, we need better structure. I'm not arguing for you to keep the same method that you have right now. But I do think that you have to really look at this student outcomes-focused government before voting anything in, because there are very problematic pieces that we need to clarify. I think it's difficult to have committees be thrown out, especially committees that are dealing with like education and finance and things like that, things that we have trouble with already at PPS. Eliminating conversation about that is hard for me to hear. I'm just going to speed along here. One of the biggest things is that public hearings are two days before the legislative session and that you guys are requesting written questions be delivered four days in advance of the legislative session. So if you think, if you're standing up here and listening to us say that we're not being heard, we're definitely not being heard anymore. If we can't get, if you hear us say something and it's two days before you're going to vote...
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Tanisha Long.
Hi, I'm Tanisha Long. I'm here from the Abolitionist Law Center. I'm also here because I answered a call to speak on student outcome-focused governance. One thing I will say is that I get very excited to vote for my school board members, because those are the people who run on platforms that tell us what they're going to do for students. Oftentimes, a lot of the things that school board members run on are things that fall outside of what student outcome-focused governance traditionally focuses on. One thing I tell people all the time is that kids are not statistics. They are not scores. They are unique. They have unique needs, and a lot of times, the things that affect what we consider outcomes fall far outside of standardized testing, most metrics. One thing you'll learn about kids is that they're just not quantifiable, and success is not quantifiable. I understand that the board needs better structure, and I think there are ways to get there, and there are ways to do that. But a poorly researched plan is not the way to do it. All of the evidence that claims that student outcome-focused governance works is anecdotal, and if you look at places like Seattle, it doesn't actually work. And what we need is, we need to come together, and we need to make sure, we find a way to make sure that the community is still empowered and that the board remains empowered. We are living in... We are living in terrifying times right now. Every mechanism of government that we thought worked clearly does not. And the school board is one of the last stopping grounds when it comes to things like book bans and citations in schools and the things that actually matter and drive those student outcomes that you're looking for. So if the board hands over its power, weakens it, or waters it down in any way, we are not serving the best interests of the community or the students. And we have every responsibility to make sure that we are fully empowered as we go through these next terrifying four years where schools are going to be the next thing they come for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Williams.
Good evening, everybody. I had the chance to speak to you all a few months ago, and I'm back again, speaking in support of Conroy Education Center. My name is Jordan Williams, and my son has been a student at Conroy for the past seven years. Conroy is a very special community. The warmth and positivity that is felt anytime you spend time there is inspiring and encouraging. I find myself tearing up with joy every time I attend a Conroy event. If you don't have a special needs child in your life, you may not understand the significance of a place like Conroy. For special needs children and their families, there are very few spaces that we feel truly comfortable in. Conroy is a safe, welcoming, and motivational environment, and Jacob is able to be himself at Conroy without judgment. He has access to the tools that he needs to thrive. Conroy is able to be this space because of the amazing teachers and support staff that make every school day possible. And as much as I'd like to believe that Conroy could be replicated elsewhere, I and many Conroy community members, such as parents, teachers, and staff, are concerned about the feasibility of moving all Conroy students to Pittsburgh-Southbrook in its current state. According to the current facility utilization plan, there are no plans for Southbrook to be renovated or remodeled. Conroy is a specialized building that has been designed and adapted to suit our students' needs. If you were to tour Conroy and then tour Southbrook, you too would see that it's not suitable for our kids. Southbrook lacks enough bathrooms, access to the community for community-based instruction, enough classrooms to support smaller class sizes, inadequate nurses area and playground, parks, safe outdoor space, and air-conditioned gym space, separate kitchen for the Blue Jay Cafe, where students learn and practice life and job skills, adequate office space for related services like PT, OT, and speech, calm-down spaces and sensory spaces, an ADL room that is designed to help our students with independently practicing their activities of daily living, and more. And it may seem like just a building, but to us Conroy students and families, this building makes it possible for our kids to learn in a safe environment that meets their varying needs, allowing them to thrive. An inadequate building would derail hundreds of kids' education, further hindering an already marginalized group. For these reasons and more, I strongly urge you to please reconsider moving Conroy to Southbrook. If anything, efforts could be redirected towards making this building even better for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angel Gober. A second call for Angel Gober. Our next speaker is Caitlin Colbert. A second call for Caitlin Colbert. Our next speaker is Sarah Goodkind. A second and final call for Sarah Goodkind. Our next speaker is Noell Webb.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Noell Webb, and I am representing the organization of 412 Justice this evening. The first thing I want to do is to ask the PPS school board to please vote no on all of these student outcomes-focused governance policy changes. The student outcomes-focused governance is anti-democratic, and it's also anti-community. School board members give up their power to question, discuss, and deliberate on important issues and hand over their power to the superintendent. When they take power away from the elected board, they take power away from us. I urge the board, vote no on revisions to Policy 001, Item 801, Policy 003, Item 802, Policy 004, Item 803, Policy 005, Item 804, Policy 006, Item 805, Policy 007, Item 806, and please vote no on revisions to Policy 009, Item 807. I want to touch on Policy 004, Item 803. The changes to this policy remove the legal authority of the policy committee to oversee district policy, limiting the committee's policymaking authority to only board policy. These changes would eliminate the board's critical oversight over the superintendent and allow corruption or poor leadership to go unchecked. This is a way to strip the board's policymaking authority and the public's ability to have a say in our public schools, leaving the superintendent to govern himself with no accountability to the community that he serves. I want to touch on Policy 007, Item 806. These changes are anti-democratic and would severely restrict what board members may discuss at a legislative meeting. One board director can't ask questions or trigger a discussion of any item on the legislative consent agenda unless three directors agree. Each board director was elected by us. They represent the voice of the community and must not be silenced at the legislative meeting before a vote. New conflict of interest language is not necessary and explicitly targets board members who were backed by labor unions as candidates, prohibiting them from voting on union contracts or any personnel matters. So why hasn't the PPS board been transparent about the student outcomes-focused governance? The board has been meeting behind closed doors with consultant Ben Mackey since they hired him in February of 2024. They have been making decisions behind closed doors without...
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Reagan Kaneski.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Kaneski, and I'm the school nurse at Conroy. Those who have visited Conroy will immediately recognize that our building offers a warm, welcoming, and safe environment for our students. Stepping through the main entrance, visitors are greeted by our large cafeteria and the Blue Jay Cafe. The cafeteria serves as the heart of the building, much like a home kitchen, where students enjoy meals together and interact with their peers. The Blue Jay Cafe, our student-run industrial kitchen, is a bustling space where students prepare and sell breakfast and lunch items to staff. Wearing chef coats and working hard in this capacity boosts the students' confidence and provides them with a sense of accomplishment. Directly past the cafeteria to the left is our large auditorium. This space is where students perform in musical shows and share their voice and dance skills with the school community. It serves as the venue for momentous events, including annual recognitions for our student athletes and where students proudly cross the stage of graduation. Throughout the building, Conroy features a variety of specialized spaces, including expansive play areas, sensory and calm-down rooms. These areas allow students to de-escalate, process emotions, and work through behaviors in a safe and respectful environment. Many classrooms are equipped with private bathrooms, and where they are not, there are separate shared facilities for students on the end of each floor, ensuring that students maintain privacy and dignity during their personal care routines. The school nurse office is a highly utilized, central-located, essential space at Conroy. It is equipped to handle the daily administration of over 60 scheduled meds and store multiple rescue medications. It also has several large storage closets that house medical equipment and supplies needed for our students. Our location in Manchester allows for easy access to public transportation. It is in close proximity to multiple hospitals and enables our students to engage in community-based outings that are integral to their curriculum. If Conroy were relocated to the proposed Southbrook site, our students would lose many of the essential features I've described. They would no longer have access to the welcoming cafeteria, the auditorium, the student-run café, private bathrooms, sensory and calming spaces, the large dimmer adequate nursing space. Furthermore, they would lose the sense of safety and security that comes from being in a building designed to meet their unique needs. We are aware that the Southbrook location cannot accommodate Conroy's current student population without significant modifications. The solution should not be to remove classrooms or programs that make Conroy so special. Every student at Conroy is an integral part of our school community. They are not just numbers or names on a list. They are part of the Conroy family, and we must consider their needs with the utmost care. In closing, I urge all decision-makers involved in this process to visit Conroy in person. Please take the time to see firsthand how our students are thriving in their current environment. Afterward, I encourage you to tour the Southbrook site to fully understand the stark contrast and the impact this decision will have on our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Valerie Webb Olman.
Okay, first, the virtual testimony. It's been seven months, and while I understand you're trying to figure out the virtual testimony into policy, you can absolutely return access the way it was before immediately. Instead, you're choosing to continue to deny essential access to stakeholders for additional months. You don't need to wait for perfection to fix this error. You can continue to discuss and vote on issues and have major impact on our children, but ignore the fact that you have silenced whole groups of people in the process. Please reinstate the virtual option while you attempt to hash out the details of the new policy. Now, I do have some suggestions for that policy. First, yes to organizing by in-person and virtual because it eliminates the issues that you guys were talking about, but no to organizing people by topic. You're making this way too complicated and wasting admin time to do this. We get three minutes a month to talk about all the things. So I might take 10 seconds to talk about something that's on the agenda this month, but I might take the rest of that time to address equally important issues that aren't being voted on this month. So just sorting us by topic doesn't mean we're going to stick to it, and it's wasting everybody's time, making it too complicated. Just get rid of that part. Lastly, I would like to recommend that you expand access to signing up both online and by calling in, like what we did before, because it actually eliminates the issue if there's anybody having problems signing up online or whatnot. I also recommend, like other boards do, if you miss the window to sign up, allow people to sign up in-person and speak last. That's what other boards do. It works. It gives the most amount of access to stakeholders possible. Last thing is, I urge you to vote no on implementing the changes for SOFG for a number of reasons, but here's a few. So Policy 009, these changes institutionalize the unproven SOFG framework into the board's written policy. It eliminates board's duty to adopt a master facilities plan, professional development plan, or plan for curriculum review and development. It allows the superintendent to implement a facilities plan to close and consolidate schools without a board vote. We already have had to fight admin to be transparent about this process that had started a year before you guys admitted that it was going on. So if you're serious about increasing transparency and expanding authentic community engagement, this is the opposite of that. So when we talk about this being undemocratic, this is just one example. Policy 004, the changes to this policy removes the legal authority of the policy committee to oversee district policy and limits it to board policy. So this is critical oversight for the superintendent. Dr. Walters, nothing personal, but we've had some terrible superintendents, and we don't need to lose that, that critical oversight. So please don't do that. Ask yourself why we started asking for the committees in the first place. It's not because we want to watch board meetings. It's because this is the only access and transparency that we can count on.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Lilly Olman.
Here I am in person, again, seven months later, because you haven't brought back the virtual testimony option. If I mess something up, I know waiting six months to finally talk about it and even more months to fix it is a bad idea. It's even worse if it harms my community. I'm not a policy expert. I'm 11, and I don't understand everything that you have to do to fix the policy. What I do know is that you can bring back the virtual option the way it was before while you figure it out. Can you please just reinstate it while you figure it out? This has gone on too long already. Next, I've been doing everything I can to be involved in the school closure consolidation conversations since a year before you even admitted there was one happening. Today, I've been watching this closely as an understatement. Why is it that I didn't even know what tomorrow's presentation was about until last week? Why hasn't the district done more to tell people what this is and what that has to do with school closures? Students are still waiting for Dr. Walters to get the information that ERS didn't get before. We still need to have a real conversation about what we want and need in this plan. When will someone take the time to talk to us about our futures? After you decided for us? That doesn't tell us that you're putting us first again. Also, I have heard that the board has had access to the presentation since January. Is this true? Why did we have to wait till tomorrow to see it? Last, like I said earlier, I'm not a policy expert, but I'm trying to understand more. There are a couple parts that I'm worried about with the SOFG. For example, changes to Policy 009 would allow the superintendent to implement a facilities plan, which means closing and consolidating schools without a board vote. That sounds like a terrible idea. I'm not saying that Dr. Walters is a bad guy or a bad superintendent, but PPS has had a long history of superintendents making really bad decisions around school closures and consolidations my whole life. Previous boards have also made bad decisions about this, but there have also been votes that stopped them too. Those votes made a huge difference. Getting rid of more transparency and accountability isn't the way to build our trust back. Don't support changes that allow more to happen outside of the public eye. I know you may hate to admit it, but right now, we don't really trust you for a good reason. Voting in favor of SOFG will only hurt that trust more. Other issues would be changed to Policies 001 and 003 that end up focusing too much on standardized tests and not the things that we need just outside of those scores. Just vote no to SOFG. I haven't seen anything good about it yet.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Good evening. I am speaking this evening to implore the board to vote no on Agenda Items 8.01 through 8.07. In the full comment I emailed to the board, I outlined in detail many serious concerns with these proposed policy revisions. I will now highlight what time allows. As currently written, the policy revisions proposed for Policy 007 would make it virtually impossible for a board member to call for a discussion of an agenda item based on public hearing testimony. Here's why. A board member would only be able to have an item pooled for discussion at legislative meeting if they had asked a question regarding that item at least four days prior to agenda review, and if they can get two other board members to also request that it be pooled. That means that if a constituent brings up an issue with an agenda item at public hearing that a board member then wants to discuss, they have no way of making that happen unless they asked a question about it before agenda meeting. That's not a way to open up transparency or listen to the public. It's not a well-drafted policy, and it communicates to the community that our input is not and maybe never has been valued by this district. That policy cannot pass as written. Any individual board member should be able to pool an agenda item for discussion. What is right is not always popular, and whether something can get the votes is not a good reason to limit discussion of it. That's absurd. Policy 007 also includes a proposed revision to the conflict of interest section that is unnecessary and goes beyond the PA Ethics Act. Implementing this clause would be completely untenable because there is no way the district is going to cross-reference every agenda item in every meeting with every campaign donation made for every campaign for every board director. No way. There's nobody who has that kind of time. This gives away that it is only intended to be used for political reasons when it suits the administration or an outside group trying to influence the way we run our school district. This revision must be removed. This revision also blatantly targets board members who are backed by labor unions as candidates and would prohibit these members from voting on union contracts and other personnel matters. This is union busting. This revision must be removed. It is extremely important that there is shared understanding about what these proposed policy changes will mean functionally, and the lack of public discussion of these proposed changes makes that impossible. Additionally, these revisions and this governance program are blatantly part of a nationwide agenda to remove Democrat control and community involvement from our public schools and privatize them. This is part of that agenda. Do not be fooled. I am literally begging you not to pass these policy revisions. I'm begging you. We can design board governance that works for PPS without adopting these harmful policy changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Ed. A second call for Lauren Ed. Our next speaker is Michael Cummings.
Hello again. Back to speak again. I wanted to start with the discussion around the virtual option. I did watch the discussion over that. I appreciate most of it. I'd echo to consider some of the things Miss Webb said, but overall, I think very good policy. Would also echo Mr. Walker. I appreciate what you said. We've been talking about this for months. There's nothing that says you can't put it back the way it was like eight months ago while you finalize the policy. I'd recommend doing that, and then you can take the two or three months, whatever it takes to do it all, and do the reordering and everything at that point. But thank you for bringing it back and for the work on that. I think we're going in the right direction there. I also wanted to talk about student outcome-focused governance. I will echo a lot of the concerns other people have raised. My main question to you, there was a pretty well-circulated article by Uriah Ward and Medium. I'd like to know if, ask if you guys have read it. He actually did training with Ms. Tella Faro in the original training way back when, ended up stepping out of it because he was concerned about many of the things that are brought up here. He has since become so convinced that this is problematic that he's doing his doctoral work in student, in school board governance. He's becoming quite an expert, and I think that reading his article at minimum is valuable, but I would also strongly recommend that you have a consultation with him. He's said that he's willing to talk with people about these issues. He's doing his doctoral work in it. Meanwhile, the organization that we're following here, AJ Crabbe, does not have any education experience, does not have any education training, and does not appear to have any education at all, even a college degree. Now, I don't have a college degree. You can do great things without one, but let's talk to the experts before we blindly follow a marketing guy. There's a lot of things that are concerning here, and I think that some conversation with Mr. Ward could be really valuable before we move forward. Let's take our time, make sure we do this right. I would also like to know if we have talked to any districts that have had this in place for a while. Somebody mentioned Seattle. Seattle's been having a nightmare situation with this, where the superintendent is shutting down the board from bringing up serious concerns that need to be addressed, that the community is demanding be addressed because the policy doesn't let them. San Francisco has a very active group right now trying to repeal it, trying to force the board to repeal it. These are two of the cities that adopted it a few years ago. There aren't very many examples. We don't have anything that I've seen, other than their own marketing, saying how it works, right? So like, why are we in such a hurry to jump on a bandwagon that isn't proven, and some of the earliest adopters are having major problems? We need to slow down, talk to some people who have more expertise in this. That isn't me, but I encourage you to go and talk with them. And I would encourage you to not vote on any policy. I'm not saying vote no even, just table it until you can at least have some more study and some more conversation. I also just want a final shout-out. Conroy's been represented here, and Conroy needs to stay where it is.
Our next speaker is Maura Kalida.
Oh, not this one? Okay, just this one? All right, sorry. Good evening. You all know, I think that I'm Maura Kalida. I try not to come here unless I think that it's something that is really important to talk to you about because I've sat in your seat. I know that I come here also with a degree in education, as someone who was on this board, who works nationally with education justice coalitions across the country, who has input and has been involved in local to federal policy platforms, and most importantly, as a parent and community member. SOFG is anti-democratic, and the proposed policy changes raise legal questions. In Denver, one of the groups I work with, Movimiento Poder, brought to light that what we've seen play out is a limit of 10 speakers, leading to two weeks' notice to scramble and get the community ready for school closures that turned around in just those two weeks. There was no way for the community to get involved and have a say and be heard. In Nevada, school board members were silenced and couldn't bring forward valid community concerns without necessary votes. One of my biggest concerns is the seeming willingness of board members to walk away from constitutional duties that you've sworn to do. This was pushback we gave Council of Great City Schools when I was on the board, and they tried a different version of this. Limiting board members and their ability to speak at legislative meetings without a vote is questionably illegal, and my organization and myself will stand by, ready to assist in pursuing legal action to defend our elected officials. This is unproven. When we implement best practices, we should confirm that they are just that, that they are actually best practices. In fact, no empirical research, not at all, has been done on this, and it's led to a lot of disenfranchised communities who are just pissed off and trying to tell everybody and warn them of the dangers. In fact, in Arizona State, there's an entire research team at ASU that is wildly concerned about this, and that team is focused right now on looking at the impact in districts that have undertaken this model. A lot of other concerns that I can't get into, disregard of sunshine law, putting copyright and language into policy, never best practice, creating an unfunded mandate. This was designed by superintendents to make their lives easier. Again, no offense, Dr. Walters, but I echo everybody else. You know, an attempt to strip the union of supporting board members and having the right to vote, a return to reliance on standardized test scores that you've already moved to dis-disaggregate. We fought so hard to get that, that, those goals to be aggregated by disability, by race, and now you've removed that? That's really concerning, and that was something that we fought for, for a long time. If you're looking for a model that works, look at co-governance. We're not asking for listening sessions, per your conversation last week.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
We're asking for conversations, and that's the most important thing.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Pam Harbin. A second call for Pam Harbin. Our next speaker is Casey Klinger. A second call for Casey Klinger. Our next speaker is Erica Gidley.
Good evening. My name is Erica Gidley. I'm a parent and community member at Arsenal Elementary. I just feel like what everyone else has said is just so heavy. I don't know much about Conroy. Please listen to everyone who is here that has spoken about Conroy. And, I don't know, I feel like a terrible debate speaker right now, but thank you for bringing virtual comments back on the table. I hope this is something that is fast-tracked so more of the community you serve can make their voice heard. As I was sitting and outlining my comments for tonight, I kept coming back to one overarching concern. There are too many consultant firms molding PPS at the expense of the students and local community. We spent $100K, possibly less, because of a unanimous board vote for Council of the Great City Schools to model for this student outcomes-focused governance policy. We paid $250,000 for ERS for the FU plan that we will hear more about tomorrow night, and while this is all going on, we paid $110K for Greenway Strategy Group for our five-year plan. These are not small amounts in a time of budgetary crisis, and while I appreciate professional development, it feels like the consultants are whittling away the voice of the community and board. Also, none of these firms are local or shown they understand the city of Pittsburgh. The voices of the consultants we're paying for are overtaking the community. I am concerned with all student outcome-focused governance policies and urge the board to vote no on, on all policy changes. These policies are restrictive and funnel voices of students, board, and community to the district. Part of these policies that really concern me is that research has shown us for years that teaching to the test is not optimal for high student outcomes, but these policies double down on this fallacy. This strips the students down to their test scores. I'm also extremely concerned with these policies taking away the voices of elected officials and restricting communities and eliminating conversation. Probably if there was like an AI thing right now, it would tell me to stop using the word like "community" and "eliminating conversations." I just feel like that is such a strong theme with these policies that really needs to be heeded. As I've said in the past, I understand the necessity for change. I understand streamlining. I'm not against these things. I'm not against easing some of the burden off the board to encourage a better life balance with an intense unpaid position. I'm not against consolidating schools to optimize resources and student outcomes.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Ferris. A second call for Annie Ferris. Our next speaker is Melinda Mix.
Hello again. I'm Melinda Mix. I'm an itinerant ESL teacher currently serving students at three different schools in PPS. I want to tell you about my day today. Not long after I arrived at my third school, I was called to the office. I never know what is waiting for me. Last week, it was because an eight-year-old had not been picked up, the staff couldn't get a hold of mom, and I needed to ask in Spanish who was supposed to come. ¿Quién debería llegar hoy para ti? Today, it was because a dad had arrived with one of his children. They were registered, but we didn't know when they would start attending. The two children are going to begin tomorrow. No one else in the building speaks their language. The younger sibling will be in second grade and has never been to school. Education has been unavailable in the country where they lived. I asked some questions, gave them a little tour, and told them that we are happy that they're here. What I didn't say is that I will not be able to give either of them the support that I think they deserve and that they really need to be successful. But that's not even what I was planning to talk about tonight. I wanted to talk about a different student, a middle-schooler who has been here for less than a year. They cannot yet read or write in English at even a first-grade level. This student is so bright and curious and just wonderful to work with. One day, I saw a drawing this student had done of an anatomical heart, which turned out to be from memory. I said it was beautifully done, and they said that they want to be a doctor someday. What I didn't say is that maybe that is impossible. I can only teach them for 40 minutes a day, and the other teachers try their best, but they simply do not have the training or experience to adequately support students like this. How many years will it take them to develop the English proficiency needed for college, let alone medical school? I have nine newcomers coming in the next few days and weeks, and I have at least 20 other kids that I will not be able to give the support that I think they deserve and what they really need to be successful. I really hope that tomorrow night, when you present your feasibility study, that it is clear you have considered the needs of these students and how we will actually meet them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Billy Howman.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm Billy Howman, president of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers. I speak tonight as a representative of the union that represents by far the majority of the workers you employ. I strongly urge you to reject the proposed changes to Board Policies 001, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9. First, regarding the collection of policy amendments as a whole. The elected school board does not need to spend its time setting student outcome goals. Spending 50% or more of your time setting goals and talking about them will not narrow the racial achievement gap or increase overall learning. We have been measuring and setting goals for decades. The basis of the 2002 Federal No Child Left Behind Law set a goal to move the percent of students proficient in reading and math from the 2002 levels to 100% by 2014. It didn't happen. PA Act 82 of 2012 required student outcomes to be 50% of teacher, classroom teachers' rating. Now it's down to 30. It hasn't changed anything. Two consecutive unsatisfactory annual ratings for a teacher will result in dismissal. Board members, if you fail to, if you fall far below your goals in consecutive years, will you resign? The Gates Empowering Effective Teachers Grant spent 10 times the money on teacher evaluation than it did on teaching and learning environment. The district has not appropriately shepherded restorative practices or supported its necessary structures. Student outcomes-focused governance will become the obstacle that we will need to remove. Second, a proposed change to Policy 7 states, "A conflict of interest also includes the requirement of school directors to recuse themselves from all matters involving individuals or organizations who made campaign contributions to them." All matters, not just contract votes, not just voting. You will be hard to find an item in this district that does not involve PFT-represented employees. You will have an even harder time to find an example of a conflict of interest arising from PFT support for a school director candidacy. When we disagree, we do not think that your position is a product of a lack of campaign support from us. We just disagree. All of the things to pluck from the Council of Great City Schools Sophomore Governance rubric, you have deliberately chosen the anti-union item. PFT and PPS have a long history of partnership beyond collective bargaining. Right now, the destruction of the U.S. Department of Education is underway. Every public school district will be affected. 26 million students will lose critical services. Federally-funded special education services will be lost. 7.5 million students with disabilities will be affected. 12 million students will lose access to CTE programs. Who is fighting back?
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Our work. I want to wish you all a safe drive home, and we will be back here tomorrow at 6 o'clock for Dr. Walters' feasibility study. So have a good night, everyone, and we'll see you again tomorrow.